Let's bring the February 8th Avon Town Council meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robert Pope.
Present.
Jason Puckett.
Present.
Don Loudon.
Present.
Greg Zuzen.
Present.
We have a quorum. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, the check register and the January 25th, 2024 executive session minutes, as well as the approval of minutes from January 25th of '24. Any questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four. Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment opportunities. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward at this time, state your name and address, and limit your conversation to three minutes. With nobody coming forward then, we'll close the first of two public comment opportunities and move to department updates. Shelby, you want to start us off?
Good evening. Shelby Pride, Parks Director. I don't have too terribly much. From a maintenance standpoint, the two new mowers that we ordered back in January will arrive on Monday. We're very excited to have those in, even though we're ahead of schedule. And all of my maintenance staff are attending the maintenance seminar in Hendricks County at the fairgrounds, at the Hendricks County Fairgrounds, sorry, in April. So that is put on by the Indiana Park and Rec Association, and they attended last year and they really liked it. So I'm going to send all of them back again this year for that. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy.
Hi there. Betsy Porter, Public Works Project Coordinator. We have a few updates for you. We do have the 2024 Community Crossings paving project. That application was submitted, and there are 26 roads that were on the application. Second, County Road 100 South reconstruction, just a small punch list left fixing some pipe joints and installing pipelineer. County Road 100 North Raceway Road Roundabout. We have some ongoing coordination with Hendricks County and Marion Counties Utilities and adjacent properties. Right-of-Row acquisition, or right-of-way, sorry, acquisition is ongoing. We have 900 East to Angelina Way Roundabout, the Costco. Utility coordination is ongoing. Right-of-way acquisition has been approved by RDC and should bid out soon, maybe March or April. We have Dan Jones widening phase one. EMB paving is done for the winter. We just have road surface and pavement markings in the spring. There was a small drainage issue, and they're in the process of fixing. They actually were out there today. We have Dan Jones widening phase two. Tree clearing is complete, and the three houses that were slated for demo are gone. So no more houses in the way. Road contractor will be construction this spring, should begin construction this spring. Sorry, nervous, not used to talking. Dan Jones Phase Three, which is US 36 to 100 North, field check plans are under revision. Conducting environmental and utility coordination now should bid out early 2025. We have Dan Jones Phase Four. We are submitting a request for funding for this project, and we will find out in March. All right. We also have submitted for $1 million highway safety improvement project or program. This is for, I'm sorry, this is for the preemptions for public safety. It's just for upgrades for the emergency vehicle preemption equipment. And when was that?
Stormwater utility, Avon Heights Drainage Project.
Utility relocation for the work is currently underway. When the project is over, we will repave all of the affected roads, and this will bring the entire subdivision to standards. Keaton, myself, and Drew, we did MS4 recertification today. Eli sat in. He's our new guy, and he will get his certification later this month. Lots of stuff. Sorry. Any questions?
Only question I have, what about the community crossing? Did you mention that?
Yeah. That first.
You didn't mention $3 million.
$3 million, yep.
Didn't hear it. He's a man.
Oh, yes, $3 million for the paving project.
Okay. Million five and our match of a million five.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sean Stoops, the Chief of Police for the Police Department. First of all, I want to congratulate Officer Pete Michael for being recognized by MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, for his outstanding efforts in identifying and apprehending impaired drivers in 2023. Officer Michael apprehended 23 impaired drivers in total for last year to help make our streets and safer for all of us and our family as well. Something they don't usually post in those posts about those accolades is how difficult this has become to even do an OWI arrest. It's more difficult to do one of those than it is a felony arrest in some cases because of the amount of paperwork and all of redundancy to make sure that that case stands up strong in court for a conviction. So it takes a lot of extra work, and it's not really incentivized in any other way other than the awards and recognition like this. So if you see him out there thanking, because that's quite a, that's a pretty big number for one year. On February 12th, the Avon Police Department's newest member of the team will start as our intelligence analyst. Candace Reed comes to our agency with several years of experience, education, and training in the intelligence analyst field. She's also a part-time contractor for Gainbridge, where they do a lot of events, as you might be aware of. I won't mention those, because I'm not sure if we're allowed to do that. But she does a lot of security, intelligence, research, and work for them as well for some of those big events that they have there as well. So she's, we're really excited to bring her into the investigative world over there at the Police Department, and so she can really demonstrate how she can help our investigators get more information and clear more cases. Congratulations to Kevin Kasperzick and Sawyer Donovan. They had their second anniversary for our Police Department in January. Officers Pete Michael, Parker Rourke, Joe Davy, Tanner Brennan, all had their three-year anniversary. And we also want to congratulate Officer Sean Diebold on his seventh year with our agency. So we're starting to finally build up our veteran officers again. So it's good to know we have some good people out there that's helping teach these younger officers as they, as they come on the department. Our hiring process is underway. Said this last, at the last meeting, we're still accepting online applications for the position of police officer. It's easy and quick to apply online. That will also get you registered for our written test on March 16th, as well as the physical agility test. And if you are an ILA certified officer currently, we also have streamlined the hiring process for certified officers through our merit board by modifying the physical agility test to make it pretty quick and painless. So if you're not wanting to get out there at seven o'clock in the morning and run a mile and a half in 20-degree weather, we've made that a little easier for you. So go to our website, go to the police tab, and you can get more information on how to apply, as well as more information about that process. Last week, we all met with Officer Mike Whittle over in the Police Department Training Room, and where he marked off duty for the last time after more than 20 years of service with the Avon Police Department into the town. His institutional knowledge and veteran leadership will be deeply missed, and we wish him and his family the best in their next chapter. We met with contractors last week regarding the renovation of the old town court portion of the police building, and we're very excited to get started on that renovation very soon. We're hoping that that will, we'll have some stuff on paper to bring you here within the next couple of weeks about that. This year's National Night Out Against Crime is now on the calendar. Usually it's in the, like, the first Tuesday of October, but this year it's going to be July 25th, 2024, so write that down so you don't miss it. But I'm sure between our marketing geniuses that we have here at the Town of Avon, you're going to know about that well in advance, so you won't miss it. One of the reasons we're moving that is to help us, help provide us with other opportunities for better weather, as well as to avoid conflicts with scheduling events at the Avon High School. And lastly, we will be accepting applications for the 2024 Avon Police Department Citizens Police Academy. So watch our social media pages, as well as check out our town's website for more information about that coming very soon. It's very popular, and we only have about 15 seats. So if you're really interested in doing that, I encourage anyone who hasn't to take part in that and learn a little bit more about what we do and the real world of policing. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
We just need to make a note that we're going to have to change our council meeting for that evening for National Night Out, because there'd be a conflict. And we all participate, and we enjoy doing it, so.
You definitely will have some hot dogs to cook, or, yeah. Jason's new, so he, we may introduce him to Cotton Candy.
Thank you, Chief. Jared, are you up next?
I'll go real quick. He's, he's got nothing, so I'll go. With the National Night Out, yes, just let me know when you guys want to move the meeting. I'll make sure that gets noticed. We did close our books officially for 2023, obviously back in January. Ryan and I finally carved out some time to spend together yesterday to get the budget input. So all your reports that will come out for January, which we're reconciling this week, will have all of the numbers on it for you. So we like that, and it was, it's like to the penny. So we're very proud of that. It only took us three and a half hours. We have already started working on the annual financial report that, as you know, is, well, maybe you don't know, is a huge undertaking. It takes the entire month of February to do, and Calvin's going to be in quite a bit. So if you're in saying hi to the employees, stop by inside of Calvin, because he does a lot of work with me to help get that annual financial report input before the end of this month, when it's due. So you will also get a copy of that when I'm done with it.
Anybody else? Let's move on then to council comment and liaison reports. Jason.
I don't have anything new. I did go to the Parks Meeting last night. That was great to meet some of the new folks, and actually, the two folks that we nominated new at the couple meetings ago are the President and the Secretary. So they're jumping right in and excited to keep going there. That's all I've got.
Actually, pretty light.
The only update I have is Ryan shared about the meeting. We had you, me, him, and HCEDP about the annexation strategy. Ryan mentioned it, but I just wanted to reiterate it from my own perspective. It just felt exciting to have Avon be a part of those conversations. So it's, it's great things, but that's it.
Don.
Ryan, Greg, and I met last week and talked some more about Avon annexation opportunities, and things are kind of coming together on a couple of those projects. So hopefully soon, we'll be able to talk to you guys more about that. And other than that, I'll be planning to attend the GOP caucus to fill our vacancy. That's tomorrow here at Town Hall at 6:30.
Following up a couple of things, I was at the Legislative Breakfast on the 29th, and then on this site selector planner that came. I think it's interesting, it's exciting really, that we're kind of going to showcase Avon and the different areas that we have to bring in potential opportunities for our community and make my move and those things. I mean, so we're getting our name out there. We've got people talking very highly about us respectfully. You know, years ago, we didn't have that same opportunity, so that's a good thing. That's all we have then. Let's move on to new business zoning introductions, Mission Foods. Mr. Cannon.
Yeah, these are, your zoning process and rules and procedures actually require any rezonings to actually come and to be introduced, and so I believe there's folks here from Mission Foods, and I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tyler Oaks. I'm with Bose McKinney &amp; Evans in Indianapolis, here on Petitioner, which is Gruma Food Corporation, also doing business in them.
Perfect. Hopefully, that all got on. Do I need to restart? Are we good? Perfect. I'm sorry? Yeah, sure. So, good evening. My name is Tyler Oaks. I'm with Bose McKinney &amp; Evans in Indianapolis, here on behalf of Petitioner, which is Gruma Food, or Gruma Corporation, who also is the owner of Mission Foods. Currently, this is a rezone where we're asking to, for a parcel at 9597, as well as 9643 East County Road 100 South, to be rezoned from an R1 to an I3. Gruma Corporation currently owns property directly to the west of this parcel. It's currently their main hub, certainly in Indiana and for majority of the Midwest, as a manufacturing plant. That was done in 2020, and strangely enough, it's right on the line, so that had to go through Plainfield back in 2020 when they got approval for that. So next door, the property currently we're in question, both of them came available. Gruma went ahead and purchased those properties, so they all, they are currently the fee owner and are requesting this rezone to ultimately lead into expansion of this current manufacturing plant. We think this is going to go great with the comprehensive plan. I know staff noted that although there's not a direct future use on this area, it's adjacent to two light industrial usage areas, and that we're going to fall right in line with both of those. So happy to work with staff, excited to continue to be, I know my client's excited to be a good neighbor in the area and have a nice relationship with Avon. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the project and the interim.
Any questions for the Petitioner?
I do have a couple. In looking at the highlighted parcels here, you are abutting then directly to a custom residential area. Have you guys reached out or spoken with the property owners in that neighborhood, and are you proposing some type of a dense buffer?
Yeah, so notice letters actually go out this week. I think they went out today. And so we typically, our processes will set up some sort of meeting for the neighborhood where if they'd like to come and speak to us, we're happy to answer any questions. My client will answer questions on what's going on. In terms of the buffer, we're happy to work with, you know, the Avon Plan Commission, as well as the neighbors, to do whatever is necessary. My client takes a lot of pride in being a good neighbor currently in that area, and although they don't currently abut in that neighborhood, they're aware of what they're signing up for and what they're getting into, and they understand how important it is to those homeowners that there's a good buffer system. There's, I mean, there's light industrial in the area, so luckily, this isn't, you know, brand new. I think there's an industrial site directly south of that complex, so it's, it's not a new use in the area. But there will be, and I'm, I know my client will have a better outline when we go through the, the Plan Commission, as well as come back in front of you all in terms of what that buffer's going to look like.
Are you guys going to, do you anticipate asking the Plan Commission for a reduced buffer?
I cannot speak to that currently. That's something that I can certainly work with my client on and get back to. I know there's probably going to be some hesitance from, to get a reduced buffer because of the neighborhood there, but I can't commit one way or the other right now.
Okay, just curious.
I, I think why Don is asking that is, and I understand this is a pre-conceptual design, so it's not, the, the design you have laid out is pretty bare bones. So I want to reiterate, I'd be very challenged if this didn't have some strong wide buffer to prevent noise, light pollution, et cetera, to spill over into that residential neighborhood. On top of this conceptual design, my understanding is this is to support the building just to the west. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is, the, the design doesn't show it, so again, with, it's pre-conceptual, is there a goal to have a, like, access road between them to, to allow from this new facility to travel to the old facility or vice versa?
So I, I'm not sure on an access road, to be honest with you. I think they're still a little bit in their preliminary discussion on what it's going to be used for. You know, it could be used for more manufacturing to support. There could be administrative offices there as well, and so I think they're still kind of in that design period on whether an access road would exist or not. I know we're happy to work with, with you or, or the Commission, and if there's going to be one, making sure that's done correctly, or if one's needed at all. I'm sure there's some hope for some contiguity there, but happy to have a discussion about that.
Well, I think the concern is, is if you go out to the roundabout, you can only, you can either go around the roundabout, or you got to go east, and then you've got the median there, so you can't turn around to come back, so.
Yeah, I think there would be.
Might make sense to do that.
Yeah. I would think there would be access to the parking lot, even if it's not a formal road per se, but yeah, I would think they would connect over.
Are the existing homes on that parcel, are they going to stay, or are they going to be all removed as well?
I think eventually the plan would be to remove them, but currently, there's no timetable on that, and I, there's no guarantee that they're going to be removed. Right now, the, for the foreseeable future, the property's going to stay in the current state that it is. This is just to go along with what their plans are for the future. So I would, I would expect them to tear that down, but I can get confirmation for you all when we come back.
Any other questions for the Petitioner? Let us show then that Mission Foods, ZA 23-06, Mission Foods, has been introduced.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Polty Homes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Melissa Gerard, and I am the, oh, thank you. Is it up already? Okay. I am the manager of Land Planning and Entitlements for Polty Homes. I am here in two capacities tonight. One, along with your annexation efforts, to bring your property on a super voluntary annexation. So we will need, and we can go through at the end of my presentation, it needs to be set for public hearing on the annexation. And then two, to introduce the zoning and what we're planning to do with this project. As you know, Polty has a long history in Avon. We're very bullish on this community. We love the schools, we love the amenities, you're getting a brand-new downtown. There's a lot of things going for, for Avon right now. So we, we have this project, let me see. This will give you a little bit of reference for the location. It is on 100 South, just west of Hickory Elementary and the Hickory Mills subdivision, and to the west is the water park. So there's about a little over 20 acres here. Your comprehensive plan, as you know, you have some, like, bubble stuff in your comprehensive plan, but a lot of it is blank, so there's really no designation for this in the comprehensive plan. The county zoning, it right now is RB, which is kind of a middle intensity zoning, and we're kind of proposing the same thing with the R2 into the Town of Avon. This is our current concept plan. I think some of you may have seen an earlier version of this. It's kind of changed a little bit. The previous version, we had 42 lots. We have a lot of topographical challenges with this piece of property, and I'd still like to try and get 42 lots out of it, but right now, we're, this plan is showing at 39. We are planning on seeking your enhanced architectural, your architectural enhancements, which are in Section 7.27 of your UDO. However, even though we're seeking an R2 designation on this, on the chart in Table 7.2, we're kind of more like an R1 and a half. The, we're way under the density that would be allowed. Your R2 would allow a 4.0 density. Right now, we're at a 1.86 density, which is even lower than the R1, which would allow 2.5 units per acre. So at 1.86, we're way below even the R1 density. We're kind of in between on the lot area. The, the smallest lot that we have is, and there's only one that's below 9,000. I looked at all of these today. There's one lot that's 8953 square feet, but we go all the way up to 20,626. Most of the lots are in the 9, 10, 11, 12,000 range, square feet. That is kind of, your R1 would, would allow 10,000 square feet. The R2 is 7,200 square feet. So at, you know, our 8953, which is our smallest lot, we're well above the R2 with the enhanced architectural standards. The, the lot width, we're at about 65 feet on the lot width, which, again, is between the R2 and R1 on Table 7.2. So we're planning on this project kind of being a follow-up to Brookstone.
Gruma went ahead and purchased those properties, so they all, they are currently the fee owner and are requesting this rezone to ultimately lead into expansion of this current manufacturing plant. We think this is going to go great with the comprehensive plan. I know staff noted that although there's not a direct future use on this area, it's adjacent to two light industrial usage areas and that we're going to fall right in line with both of those. So happy to work with staff, excited to continue to be, I know my clients excited to be a good neighbor in the area and have a nice relationship with Avon. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the project and the interim.
Any questions for the petitioner?
I do have a couple. In looking at the highlighted parcels here, you are abutting then directly to a custom residential area. Have you guys reached out or spoken with the property owners in that neighborhood? And are you proposing some type of a dense buffer?
Yeah, so notice letters actually go out this week. I think they went out today. And so we typically, our processes will set up some sort of meeting for the neighborhood where if they'd like to come and speak to us, we're happy to answer any questions. My client will answer questions on what's going on. In terms of the buffer, we're happy to work with, you know, the Avon Plan Commission as well as the neighbors to do whatever is necessary. My client takes a lot of pride in being a good neighbor currently in that area. And although they don't currently abut in that neighborhood, they're aware of what they're signing up for and what they're getting into. They understand how important it is to those homeowners that there's a good buffer system. There's, I mean, there's light industrial in the area, so luckily this isn't, you know, brand new. I think there's an industrial site directly south of that complex, so it's, it's not a new use in the area. But there will be, and I'm, I know my client will have a better outline when we go through the, the Plan Commission as well as come back in front of you all in terms of what that buffer's going to look like.
Are you guys going to, do you anticipate asking the Plan Commission for a reduced buffer?
I cannot speak to that currently. That's something that I can certainly work with my client on and get back to. I know there's probably going to be some hesitance from, to get a reduced buffer because of the neighborhood there. But I can't commit one way or the other right now.
Okay, just curious.
I, I think why Dawn is asking that is, and I understand this is a pre-conceptual design, so it's not, the, the, the design you have laid out is pretty bare bones. So I want to reiterate, I'd be very challenged if this didn't have some strong wide buffer to prevent noise, light pollution, et cetera, to spill over into that residential neighborhood. On top of this conceptual design, my understanding is this is to support the building just to the west. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is, the, the design doesn't show it. So again, with, it's pre-conceptual. Is there a, a goal to have a, like access road between them to, to allow from this new facility to travel to the old facility or vice versa?
So I, I, I'm not sure on an access road, to be honest with you. I think they're still a little bit in their preliminary discussion on what it's going to be used for. You know, it could be used for more manufacturing to support. There could be administrative offices there as well. And so I think they're still kind of in that design period on whether an access road would exist or not. I know we're happy to work with, with you or, or the, the Commission and if there's going to be one, making sure that's done correctly, or if one's needed at all. I'm sure there's some hope for some contiguity there, but happy to have a discussion about that.
Okay.
Well, I think the concern is, is if you go out to the roundabout, you can only, you can either go around the roundabout or you gotta go east. And then you've got the median there, so you can't turn around to come back. So.
Yeah, I think there would be.
It might make sense to do that.
I would think there would be access to the parking lot, even if it's not a formal road per se. But yeah, I would think they would connect over.
Are the existing homes on that parcel, are they going to stay or are they going to be all removed as well?
I, I think eventually the plan would be to remove them, but currently there's no timetable on that. And I, there's no guarantee that they're going to be removed. Right now, the, for the foreseeable future, the property's going to stay in the current state that it is. This is just to go along with what their plans are for the future. So I, I would, I would expect them to tear that down, but I can get confirmation for you all when we come back.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Let us show then that Mission Foods, Z A twenty-three dash oh six, Mission Foods has been introduced.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Polte Homes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Melissa Gerard, and I am the, oh, thank you. Is it up already?
No.
Okay. I am the manager of land planning and entitlements for Polte Homes. I am here in two capacities tonight. One, along with your annexation efforts, to bring your property on a super voluntary annexation. So we will need, and we can go through at the end of my presentation, it needs to be set for public hearing on the annexation. And then two, to introduce the zoning and what we're planning to do with this project. As you know, Polte has a long history in Avon. We're very bullish on this community. We love the schools, we love the amenities. You're getting a brand new downtown. There's a lot of things going for, for Avon right now. So we, we have this project. Let me see. This will give you a little bit of reference for the location. It is on one hundredth South, just west of Hickory Elementary and the Hickory Mills subdivision. And to the west is the water park. So there's about a little over 20 acres here, here. Your comprehensive plan, as you know, you have some like bubble stuff in your comprehensive plan, but a lot of it is blank. So there's really no designation for this in the comprehensive plan. The county zoning, it right now is RB, which is kind of a middle intensity zoning. And we're kind of proposing the same thing with the R two into the town of Avon. This is our current concept plan. I think some of you may have seen an earlier version of this. It's kind of changed a little bit. The previous version, we had forty-two lots. We have a lot of topographical challenges with this piece of property. And I, I'd still like to try and get forty-two lots out of it, but right now we're, this plan is showing at thirty-nine. We are planning on seeking your enhanced architectural, your architectural enhancements, which are in section seven point two seven of your U D O. However, even though we're seeking an R two designation on this, on the chart in table seven point two, we're kind of more like an R one and a half. The, we're way under the density that would be allowed. Your R two would allow a four point oh density. Right now, we're at a one point eight six density, which is even lower than the R one, which would allow two point five units per acre. So at one point eight six, we're way below even the R one density. We're kind of in between on the lot area. The, the smallest lot that we have is, and there's only one that's below nine thousand. I looked at all of these today. There's one lot that's eighty-nine fifty-three square feet. But we go all the way up to twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-six. Most of the lots are in the nine, ten, eleven, twelve thousand range, square feet. That is kind of, your R one would, would allow ten thousand square feet. The R two is seventy-two hundred square feet. So at, you know, our eighty-nine fifty-three, which is our smallest lot, we're well above the R two with the enhanced architectural standards. The, the lot width, we're at about sixty-five feet on the lot width, which again is between the R two and R one on table seven point two. So we're planning on this project kind of being a follow-up to Brookstone. Brookstone has two product lines in Brookstone. This would be the larger of the two product series that are in Brookstone. I would note, though, that this product, we are expecting to be a little bit more expensive even than Brookstone. Because of the topography, there are going to be a substantial number of lots that will need walkout basements. So these, these houses will, in addition to, you know, having the two stories and the ranches, they will have the opportunity for the walkout basement, particularly on the west side. I'm going to go back to my site plan here a minute. So we've had a tack meeting already with your staff, and one of the comments we got was a trail connection. You can see in the south at the entrance along one hundredth South, we've included a trail connection there. And I don't know that there's really any other place to put it. The topography on this site is really a huge challenge. And it would require extensive ramps and switchbacks. And, and I'm not particularly comfortable, I think as the mother of a thirteen-year-old boy, having a, a deck in the woods with, that's not visible from any home or any rideaway for, I don't know, it just doesn't seem safe to me. So. So I think I've, with thinking about your next steps here. So tonight, we need to set a, a public, a hearing on annexation. And I'm not sure, I don't even think that that date is right. I think I prepared this earlier and didn't change that date. I'm sorry for that. But we all need twenty days for public notice on the annexation. So your first hearing, I guess, it would be three six, three fourteen. The Plan Commission hearing on zoning is going to be on the twenty-sixth. But your first meeting after we can get twenty days notice for the publication notice. Unless, has that done? I know the town was doing the public notice on the annexation. And if it's already been done, we can have the public hearing on the twenty-second. But otherwise, it may have to go to March.
Yes, we can talk about this during the annexation, but we, we will do the advertisement. We've actually set it for March fourteenth.
Okay.
And then, so it'll be in the paper next Thursday.
Okay.
And so we set your annexation timeline working back from when we expected you to be on the town council. So what, the time the council's considering your zoning, after that on the agenda will be the annexation consideration. So.
Okay.
They'll, we work back from when you hit that schedule. And, and we'll handle all of that.
Okay, awesome.
Ryan, I have a question. The next item on, on our agenda is accept the annexation petition for Polte.
That's correct.
Are we going to still do that then?
Yes. So that's what, they've presented it, and so you guys need to accept it, and then we'll start the process.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for the petitioner?
I think it's a good use of that fill-in law right there. I'm excited about the initial walkout. Because we don't get a lot of that here in Avon.
It is a beautiful piece of property. I went and drove, drove it, and the topography is challenging from a construction standpoint, but it's going to be very pretty for the houses.
What about the residents that are around there? Homes that are just to the, to the west there on one hundredth South?
To the.
And yours, you've got a couple of them that are going to be kind of carved out around it as well.
We have scheduled a neighbors' meeting for next Thursday, the twelfth. Those notices have already been sent out. We're having it at the Pavilion on Whipple Lane. I don't know. It's a, I want to say six or seven, but we've already noticed it, and we'll get some feedback from the, the neighbors there.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
The main question I had was architecture standards, and you showed me through your elevations, you, one thing I've harped on over the years is texture, character. I'm seeing it there. Enhanced standards, you're meeting it. So, so no question. Just wanted to make sure I'm giving that feedback.
Well, you're meeting it on the front. We haven't seen the backside yet, and we want you to meet it on the backside as well.
I, I have run your art, enhance, architectural enhancements by our architecture folks, and they assure me that we'll meet it. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to accept the annexation petition for Polte. Any questions? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the petition for voluntary annexation of the rural state subdivision.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Greg Susan.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Next item on the agenda is a letter of intent for, with family promise. Mr. Taylor, are you going to do that, or is Julie?
I'm doing it.
Come on, we'll do it together.
Okay. Kind of your letter, though, right? Maybe? Amy's letter. All right. So I, go ahead.
So Amy's talked to you before about, or, yeah, you've heard about Family Promise's proposal. And when Julie was here last time, she said, hey, I'm going to need to apply for tax credits February fifteenth. And so what we tried to do was to see what the tax credit application required to be said. And that's what you have before you is kind of the best stab at the minimum that needs to be said in order to assure that the tax credit reviewer would say it looks like the applicant, Family Promise, is going to have control of the site. And so this is designed to go with Julie's application for that tax credit and to, to state that it is the town's intent to transfer that, that zero point seven one seven acres for the purposes of a development by Family Promise of not more than seven rental townhomes. That would be our five in nature in terms of our districts. And the, there are some conditions, obviously. As much as Julie would like your seven tenths of an acre, it is or no good if she does, doesn't get financing or tax credits or both.
Or zoning.
And zoning approval and a development plan approval, which would also be required. And so it also does her no good to get it unless you can deliver a good title. That's also a condition in here. And not surprising, since Amy is a title lawyer, that she would put that in there. So, but it, this is what our intention, they worked with Amy, was to, to say the, just barely as much as we needed to help Julie for her application, and say really no more, because we're really still early on in the process. It's a letter of intent, and it says that if those things will happen, that you'll make that transfer. And as, as we've covered before, you can, the town can make a transfer property it doesn't otherwise need, can make a transfer to certain types of charitable organizations, Family Promise being a qualifying entity. I'd be happy to answer your questions. Did I get that, Julie?
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I think, I kind of heard it, but I want to make sure. Call back. I mentioned this earlier. What happens if one of these things fails? What happens if doesn't get tax credit, doesn't get financing, doesn't get DPR approval? What happens to that land? Does the town of Avon get that back?
There would actually be no conveyance. And as the letter says, that there will be no conveyance unless these conditions are met. So if zoning's not approved, then Julie's going to say, thanks for talking to me, but don't transfer that land to me. It does me no good. Same if she doesn't, if Family Promise doesn't receive its tax credit approval, which I think would be in sometime maybe late summer.
At August.
Yeah, sure, some time. But if that doesn't happen, then she's going to tell you not to actually transfer the property. If you can't deliver a good title, they were not going to transfer the property. So right now, there are really about five conditions. Even if she can get, even if you all rezoned the property, it's does to go back to the Plan Commission who would have to approve a development plan. So lots of steps left. And in these projects, or I think the process is similar to like historic credits, sometimes also a similar process. It's a long process. The good news about the way we're, you're being asked to participate is there would actually be no conveyance. So we don't need a clawback exactly or reversionary interest. It's kind of like, we're going to hold on to it until these conditions are met, and then we'll happily transfer it to Family Promise. Or really, it's possible a, an agent's, or an entity which they direct us to. So it could be, it could be slightly a little different, but the transfer would be the, we want to make sure it meets our requirements under law, and also the requirements that would, Family Promise would have under the terms of any tax credit approval. So they're going to have to have all that too. But it's still very early on, but that's the big key. I think I like the way it's, it's set up so we don't have to get it back. We just don't give it until the conditions are met. Much cleaner that way for everybody.
Thanks, thanks, Dan. That's exactly, thank you.
Yeah. And, and you know, it's really for the point of the tax credit application, because they, you know, they want us to have a land secured before they can, that, that goes along with the application. Or I wouldn't even be having to do this right now. So that's, that's kind of the intent of it.
Yeah. And rather than, rather than just transferring or deeding it to Family Promise so they can apply, this is the much safer way to do it for both parties. Because it doesn't shift the ownership or liability or upkeep to the property until we're ready, we have some approval. But this does get Julie far enough where she can represent that she can gain control and do what she's requesting on the land. And so Wes, we were trying to issue for, and certainly Amy, Comer Elliott, great to work with, we're trying to get to, what is the, what do we need to do from the, from town size? What, what's the least amount we can do to put Julie in the right position? This is it.
And is there a timeframe on this? That this would expire if they didn't get this taken care of in two, three, four years?
We've got two years on the agreement.
Right. It, it's, it has a two-year expiration, which we should know well before then, but it does have an outside date. And also, it's possible that for a development pan, plan approval, that has a time period also. I think the two years is appropriate. But there's some other, you know, we would have to see some progress for the zoning approvals within, they'd have to pull permits within a certain amount of time. So there's also that, that also helps us know that the project will go forward. But the tax credits are really hard to get. If they get it, I'm confident they'll move forward.
Yeah, we're going to get them.
Any other questions for our attorney or the petitioner?
I only have one question, Dan, and I've made this known before. I am a member of the Board of Directors of Family Promise, and I just want to, should I abstain, or can I vote?
You are not required to abstain. You don't have a interest, you don't have pecuniary interest in the outcome. You're not going to get any money if this is approved, or you don't have that kind of an interest. So it's not a conflict of interest. You can abstain, obviously, if you want to, if you're concerned about the optics of it, but you're not required to.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion then for the town of Avon to enter into the letter of intent with Family Promise?
I'll make a motion that we accept it as presented.
We have a motion by Jason. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Robert. Roll call, please.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Greg Susan.
Abstain.
Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you, thank you. I think we'll be in Plan Commission in March. Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh three, park fees. Was Shelby going to do that, or?
I told Shelby to go home so she could tuck in her kids, because she was at the Parks Council meeting last night as well. So I didn't want her to not spend two nights with her kids. What's before you is an ordinance to amend some of our parks' fees. And so Shelby worked with her staff on these to identify. Some of them have gone up. Some of them, they've changed some of the stipulations. Like previously, we had half-day shelters and full-day shelters. That became a management issue that was challenging to us, on top of the fact that most people didn't really want to do it a half-day. If they reserved it, they wanted to be able to have it for the whole day. So we kind of adjusted our fees for that. Obviously, some of the other things, like our farmer's market fees, event fees in the park, and, and fees we've charged, some of those things, we had kind of been doing, but they weren't actually in the ordinance. So we're kind of cleaning those things up and adding it to the list. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. This is the first reading.
So my only question is, the very first one, says half shelter, full day, a hundred dollars. And it says full shelter, full day, a hundred and seventy-five. So it should be, I don't know. Okay, I get it. I think I get it. Never mind. Any other questions for Mr. Cannon?
Let us show then that ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh three, establishing park fees, has been introduced. Next item is the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four, amending salary ordinance to include interim planning director. Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, as you guys are aware, I, I did offer the planning director job to a new applicant. Unfortunately, we found out that the new applicant is unable to start until March twenty-fifth. And so originally, out of thinking that we were going to have someone who was going to start in a couple of weeks, I didn't necessarily have a concern that we were going to ask Ian basically to be fulfilling that planning director role, plus doing his own job. And so I feel like it's only fair that we're basically asking him for about twelve weeks to serve as our planning director, that we name him interim planning director and compensate him appropriately to do that. And so there's nothing in the ordinance that allows me to do that. So in order to do that, I'd need the town council's permission. We're basically amending the salary ordinance to create an interim planning director position. Once the new planning director starts, Ian would go back to his existing salary. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
What is that? I'm, I'm looking at your Exhibit A, and I, I don't see.
Down, senior planner, about halfway in the second row.
Yeah, senior planner.
Oh, okay. That's part of one of, I've got two questions. So one, currently, he's an hourly employee. This would make him salary. How do you navigate both the transition to that and the transition back?
Um, so normally, what we do whenever we change anybody's positions is we provide them a job offer in writing. And so that job offer normally addresses that. So I would actually say in there that you're the interim planning director, and you would not be eligible for overtime. So for that period of time that he's fulfilling that role and being compensated for that way, then he would not get overtime. But then once he goes back, he'd go back to his original salary. So I would address that in a job offer to him that he would understand.
That might be the answer to my second one, which is, he's kind of been fulfilling this role for some time now. Will this be backdated to compensate for that time that he's, before we've done this, while he's been doing that job?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you guys if you want to do it. I was proposing, so I guess I was going to request if you guys would consider waiving your rules and procedures and doing a final reading on this tonight, which would allow me, our pay period just started on Monday, so that would allow me to at least, in his next paycheck, it would be, it would be reflected. It gets to be a little challenging on our payroll to try to go back and start him. And it's only, he would have only missed about two weeks. So if, if you guys were willing to do that, I think that makes it clean, it makes it easier for our payroll, that he would start effective basically Monday in that position. And so his next paycheck would reflect it.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon? Then let's show that we've introduced ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four, amending salary ordinance to include interim planning director.
And I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and go to a final reading for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Greg Susan.
Four. Let's move then to the final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four, amending salary ordinance to include interim planning director. Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero four, amending the salary ordinance to include interim planning director as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Susan.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, legal counsel report.
I have nothing new for you, but thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the second of two public
Next item on the agenda is the second of two public comment opportunities. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. May come forward at this time. Please state your name and address and limit your conversation to three minutes. With nobody coming forward, we'll close that portion of the agenda and move to council comment.
Nothing new for me.
All right, council calendar.
So I, two things. One, your next meeting is February twenty-second at seven P M. I know that we had a work session prior to this, and we didn't get through all of those items. So we have a couple of options. I think we were planning to try to have a comp plan focused work session on, before the March fourteenth meeting with the Plan Commission. So that agenda may be comp plan oriented. So those three items we didn't get to today, we could either do a work session on the twenty-second before, or we could try to push them to that March fourteenth meeting, but we may not get to them as well either. So I don't know if you guys want to provide me some guidance on your preference on that.
I will defer to my council associates, because I will not be here on that meeting.
We talked about this last year, was when we got to a point where a work session agenda was too, too packed that we might duplicate in a month. I, I'd suggest we just do a work session before the February twenty-second meeting. I think that fits in with.
Agreed, yeah.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. So I will reiterate, your next meeting is February twenty-second, five thirty P M for a work session, followed by the town council meeting at seven P M. And then also, just a reminder, strategic session on the seventeenth. We'll start at nine, but Julie has, so kindly as she always does, she'll have some food and beverage available for you a little bit beforehand. So if you want to show up eight thirty and, and grab some breakfast before we get started, please, we'll start at nine promptly.
Talking orange juice and coffee.
Yes.
And carpet.
Is that it? Meeting adjourned.